In the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors meeting, Monday, January 13th, 2020, ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. First item is we have public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium and state your name and home address if you have anything on, anything that's on the agenda. Is there anyone to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to item number one on the agenda, which is Proclamations. I don't think we have any this time. Item number two, we do have approval of minutes of the January 2nd and January 6th, 2020 meetings.
And I have a question about the assignments to committees. There is one assignment, Dubuque. Let's see, it's Dubuque Area Transportation Study, the Policy Committee, and that should, I should be designated as a designee there. I'm on... Like giving me pages here, sorry. It's in, it's on January 2nd, and it's in the, so it is the Dubuque Area Transportation Study, RPA Policy Committee.
Eight or nine?
Yes, I think it's nine. I see the pages there, so it's the third line. It's left open right now.
Dubuque Area Transportation Study, RPA Policy Committee?
Correct.
Okay. And you're, you're feeling you should be in there? I'm, I'm comfortable with that, that's what you're requesting?
Well, that's what I've been attending.
Okay.
And we left the early childhood board open, we're going to revisit that one, that's why there's nothing there.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, any other discussions on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve with that amendment.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as corrected. No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. All right, we have consent items. So we have, this is item number three on the agenda. We have the quarterly report of the auditor. And the consent, I think we can do all three of those, right? So that's 3A is quarterly revenue report of the auditor. 3B, quarterly revenue report of the recorder. And 3C, quarterly revenue report of the sheriff.
Motion to receive and file the quarterly reports.
Okay.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the three consent items, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three zero. Item four, proof of publication, we don't have any today. So we go to item five. We have the secondary roads, five-year plan. Excuse me. Oh, the notice, okay, proof of publication. Okay. Notice of public hearing amendment to secondary roads, five-year plan. All right, I got it.
And when will that be?
January 27th.
And I just figured out what NPH means.
Notice of public hearing, I will make a motion to approve the notice of public hearing for the five-year plan on January 27th at 5:30 in this very same room.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. It only takes me a little over three years to catch on to all the acronyms.
It's New Year Day, that's, we all have a chance to learn something.
And I didn't have to, I didn't have to say that out loud. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. All right. Next up on the agenda is item number six, approval of plats. So we will go to our zoning administrator, Tammy Henry, and I see Angie Stephens is here to ably assist.
I'm gonna get this thing on as soon as I can here.
And Tammy, you've got, Angie, you're having her learn the ropes for presenting and that type of thing, right? Right? Oh, I'm... Good move and good, good experience for Angie and good leadership on your part.
Yeah, very thorough test, because it's, you know.
We're also going to be, we are working on trying to start presenting the zoning code update, and we're getting those documents ready to start going to the zoning board and then to move those documents forward to you. So we need to meet with Denise on how we're gonna get those all in line for you, and so that's the thing that we're doing after this meeting, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, so, this property is Joseph O'Neill's third subdivision final plat. The property is owned by Michael and Joan Bessler and is located .57 miles east of the city of Farley along Old Highway Road with a total of 8.664 acres surveyed. The property is zoned R2 single-family residential. The purpose of this plat is to separate the current home and to sell it to the son and daughter-in-law, who currently live in the home, and convert the detached garage into a new home site. Lot one is a total of 6.695 acres surveyed with a detached garage that would be converted into a new home. Lot two is a total of 1.96 acres surveyed with a home, and it will be sold to the son and daughter-in-law and remain in current residential use. Lot one will have a 30-foot access easement across lot two, and it will use the existing residential access off of Old Highway Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat, there are no liens or mortgages on this property. Some other signatures are over 60 days old, and they include the surveyor, September 23rd of 2019, the attorney of November 12th, 2019, the city of Dubuque, October 7th of 2019, county planning and zoning, October 15th of 2019. This plat has been reviewed by myself as the plats officer and has all the required signatures, I respectfully recommend approval. So what's happening here is I'll show you, you can see where the easement is and you can see where the existing house is. So what's, when you look at this, there's a home here, the glare, I'm gonna show you. There's a garage here, this is gonna be platted off, they're separate from each other, they meet the requirements for, for plating, and they're zoned residential, and this is going to be converted into a home.
Why aren't some of the signatures more than 60 days old? I have not seen that before.
Actually, it has happened to us, and what happens is, is people get busy and they just don't get it finished. And if it gets to the point where it's a year, then we have to come in and ask for you to give an extension if they haven't finished it, or they would have to start all over. So you'll get signatures that are old because of just something's happened and they've gotten behind and maybe attorney didn't get to it, or whatever it took.
So why did you draw our attention to that?
Because we always do, we always have. And if that's something you want us to change and not do that, we can do that.
I'm just trying to understand, because it seems different to me.
You have heard it before, maybe just don't recall that, but we have done that before.
Yeah, I thi- I think it's in there, when, when that occurs, it's in there.
Yeah, it's always been there, and like I said, if you have something you want us to change, we can easily do that.
If you can remind me, related to our water and sewer, and so these being separate parcels, could they have a shared well, but separate sewer?
This, I believe these ones are gonna have a shared well, but they will have to have separate sewers.
Separate sewers, okay, and we normally would inspect those, is that right?
Yeah, well, that's where your health department, your, that department will come in and make sure that those meet those requirements.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as access, has that been?
Yeah, access, they're using the same, and you can see the easement there, they're using the same entrance, so there's no new entrance accessing this property.
Excellent, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the plat as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the plat, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three zero. Next up, we have Resolution Final Plat, White Llama Subdivision, Section 10, Table Mound Township.
I'm trying to get this in where you can see it as well. Okay, the property is owned by Jeffrey and Dawn Manders and is located .56 miles west of the city of Dubuque along Oakland Farms Road with a total of 68.25 acres surveyed. The property is zoned A1 agricultural and R2 single-family residential. There was a rezoning of this property on April of 2019. The purpose of this plat is to separate the existing home from the ag land for finance purposes. Lot one is a total of 3.25 acres with an existing home, and it will remain in current ownership and use. Lot two is a total of 65 acres with an ag building, and it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot one and lot two will use an existing shared 66-foot wide access off of Oakland Farms Road. There were no additions or corrections required for the plat, the mortgage holder's acknowledgement is signed and attached, and some of the signatures are over 60 days old, and they include the surveyor of March 25th, 2019, county planning and zoning, June 16th of 2019. There was a delay in this case, I can tell you, because of an illness in the family.
And we had approved the zoning separately?
Yes, that was already done prior to the plating.
And then, and we did R2 just to match the subdivision across the road?
That's right.
Okay.
And I can show you. So the R2 is in this area. We haven't changed the mapping yet, because we don't change that until we get this plating done, and then the remainder will stay in the ag.
And the access to that parcel will be a shared one?
It also has a shared access with an easement, so it's still coming off of here, and these will be shared.
Excellent, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the plat.
And I will second that.
And Anthony, you don't have any issues with this, this is pretty routine, okay? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good week, everybody.
You too. All right, next up is item seven, under action items. So we have a Resolution 7A, Appointment of Deputies, Assistants, and Clerks. We do not have any, okay.
Good, I was looking for it.
Go right to 7B, the Semiannual Dear Status Report.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three zero. All right, next up is item C, 7C, Resolution Approving the DNR Master Matrix Relating to the Construction of a Confinement Feeding Operation Structure. This is our annual construction evaluation resolution that we must submit by the end of January, by January 31st, I believe.
Mary did check for me, and it is the same resolution that we have filed in the past. I'm just learning more about it, it seemed unfamiliar to me, but it's the same, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Master Matrix Construction Evaluation Resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right, next up, we have the 7D, which is a resolution approving the use of vehicle, use of vehicle administration, administrative policy. So the use of vehicle administrative policy is what the resolution is related to.
Dawn, maybe you can help me with this, I was looking for the area that referred to kind of distracting driving and/or electronic devices, and I couldn't reference that back.
You didn't put anything in there, starting that.
There was original language in there, because I commented on it.
Oh, and, hold on, let me...
I made the comment that, with that, because there was a comment related to even the, the rules apply to personal vehicles as well. And I just couldn't find the language anymore, and so...
About having to pull over, or you said?
I think there was a... So two questions, where, where is the language, if we can find it, related to electronic devices, phones, basically, and then hands-free? And then, secondly, that applying to county employees and their personal vehicles, related to county business?
That's under number six.
Number six? I'm not sure, okay. Employees required, thank you, that's why I couldn't find it before. Employees required to obey all federal laws and driving vehicles, and seatbelt requirement, all forms of electronic communication is prohibited during the operation. All cellphone use while driving should be limited, extended cellphone conversations need to be held with a parked vehicle.
And I think what the next part you're looking at is number 12 there?
Let me just see if I can get six right in my head first. All forms of electronic communication is prohibited during the operation of a county vehicle, any cellphone use. So redifferentiating cellphone use and electronic communication is of the intent? So texting and emailing is electronic communication, and cellphone use is just talking?
Well, texting is, I think that's under a state law that you cannot do that, and that refers to that the drivers must obey all federal and state laws. So texting is already prohibited by state law, not just our policies.
So maybe my question to the board and others would be, is, you know, your first statement, the use of all forms of electronic communication is prohibited during the operation of vehicle. So you have that statement, and then right next to it, any cellphone use should be limited in nature. And so, is everyone clear on those two statements? So do you consider a call electronic communication?
Yes.
Okay, then it would be prohibited, so then you can't have it be limited if it's prohibited. That's the way I read it, it seems confusing. And I remember we had this brief discussion in our work session as well.
So Jay, I guess I wanna jump in, I know we had at least one of our vehicles, I recall, that we ordered, they asked for, and we granted the Bluetooth capability, now you're, are you?
My question is, would you consider that electronic communication? Because it says all forms, okay, that's pretty big, of electronic communication is prohibited during the operation of a vehicle. So how would you read that?
It should say something that is accept cellphones, which are governed by, I mean, yeah, it is, it is contradictory, because I do think we want people to be able to use their cellphones briefly.
Hands-free within accordance to state law.
And we want to encourage Bluetooth, if that's, you know, what we have.
And if not, then we shouldn't be adding Bluetooth as an option, but I think, I don't think that's, that's not what I'm saying, but that's, I think, what the policy is saying is...
So I think supervisors, we've done, is generally agreeing with me that it's confusing language, and I know we talked about this last time, so I would, I don't know, if you need guidance to clean it up, it just seems that electronic communication is just kind of a generic term, and it's not really a clean term, and you could just be maybe more explicit.
So, just so I'm clear, you, you do not want to prohibit the use of a Bluetooth device?
I would want to, first of all, be in accordance to the state law, which my understanding is hands-free, is that correct?
That's my understanding as well.
Generally, it's a layman's term, hands-free, you can go to, you might even want to reference that code, but hands-free, and so if it's the only way you can have a call and be hands-free is if you use some sort of electronic communication, and so that hints, that's my, my, why this doesn't make sense.
Do you want to go ahead and table this then?
We probably will, maybe we can go to the second part then? What was my, my second part was related to personal use of the vehicles, and where was that at? That's 12, okay. Maybe not 12, but I was thinking 12, use of county business, 12, okay, the second 12.
Yeah, there's 12s numbered twice.
That's what I was just, yeah.
And I, I had a question on the other number 12, I just wanted to clarify, so...
What would the chair like to do, hit my 12 or your 12?
I'll let you go, you, I'm yielding to you, and then I'll come back.
Take Jay Wickham's, Use of Private Vehicles for County Business, number 12. Okay, all possible persons, employees using county vehicle, applied employees using, to a purpose of county-related things, so, so... When I think with clearer language in the above paragraph, this, this will help us, but I do engage in what people probably would consider more lengthy communication, hands-free in my personal vehicle, which this would be prohibited, I'm not sure if either of you two do.
I don't believe the supervisors are subject to this, if you look at...
Sure, you had to say that in public? Do as I say, not as I do.
And I'm gonna sound hypocritical when I talk about carpooling, but we can't ride together, so...
I, I mean, I see us as, obviously, we are employees, we also are elected officials. Well, maybe that's the first question to the board, do you want to be exempt from these policies?
Change the scope of it?
Well, otherwise, we have to differentiate because of the carpooling, and also, I, I mean, I've talked to Sheriff Kennedy as we drive, you know, with Bluetooth, I mean, I do make phone calls as well, using hands-free, I think we all do.
So yeah, so that's, that's my question, and it's, you know, our, if we're exempt, then, then it doesn't really, it potentially doesn't matter. What you're telling is other county employees, they should not make lengthy calls. So if we're talking to one of them, you, you can't be making lengthy calls.
Yeah, we, we would ask that they would pull over to a safe spot for...
And are we saying that that's other elected officials who are also county employees?
That's my question.
If they choose to apply it, the, the elected officials get to decide if they want to use this policy for their staff.
Is that stated in the policy?
Yes, that's...
You said for them and their staff?
Yes, so that's under the scope.
Employees.
So it's... So it's if the elected officials have the authority to apply, to use this, I mean, we, we offer it out to them to use how they see, or if they want to, it's an option, otherwise they can have their own.
And would we require them to submit their own if they don't abide by this?
I have never had that question, I...
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I have had discussion with one of our elected officials about carpooling, and, and that person seems very willing to cooperate and, and follow this when they can. So I, I guess I'll go into, I'm gonna go to my number 12 just for a second. A pet peeve of mine has been when I see people going to the same conference but taking different vehicles, personal vehicles, and the county reimbursing for mileage. So what I have seen more recently is good explanations on, on the, better explanations on the forms, one stating basically they only claimed mileage one way because they were gonna stay in that area for a few extra days. And I think that's good, that's positive. And the other was, they were coming, they live in a different town, that's quite a ways out of the area, and they didn't, weren't at the same starting point, and so they weren't able to carpool, and I agree with that, that those are good exceptions, but, so, and I, and I think, and I don't even know if this is new language. It is, okay, so, and again, it may seem hypocritical, but Ann and Jay and I can't ride together. But my first trip to Des Moines for an ISAC meeting, I rode with County Auditor Dolan and County Sheriff Kennedy. That was carpooling, and I got to ride in the sheriff's car. But, you know, that's, when, when we can do it, that's what we should do, so. And there are counties that disregard the recommendations about having a quorum in the same vehicle, but we're not one of them, so. But, so I, I'm, and I believe that our, our elected officials are on board with this, but there are gonna be exceptions, so, but I think it is heading in the right direction.
So those are only my two areas, and it seems like they've, they've been addressed, the rest of the document I'm comfortable with. Does the board want to have a rewording of that paragraph related to electronic devices and then come back to this?
Yes, and it needs to have some renumbering, has County Attorney Macy in this?
And that's probably why we have two 12s in there, is, so...
We'll hang it on the county attorney. The other question I would have is for engineering and then admin, do we have a fleet management system at all? I noticed you provided a spreadsheet of all the various types of vehicles, from order graders to just normal passenger vehicles.
That, that actually came from our budget director, because that is what's submitted through insurance, so it's just a spreadsheet that she tracks for insurance purposes.
If the board would be interested, we might want to look at, you know, possibly getting a fleet management system, that number of, of vehicles, I think you'd have value in just organizing and managing them for all their routine maintenance. You've got that for most of your heavy operation, your equipment?
We use Subcall.
Manager Plus. Okay.
It, it keeps track of, when we're at the fuel pump, we enter our mileage, and then it keeps track of that mileage, and when an oil change is getting close, it'll, it'll notify shop foreman, stuff like that, so it's, you know.
And for today, for our, our other fleet, for the other departments, they're just responsible for that maintenance themselves?
Correct, the sheriff maintains all of theirs, and then our facilities superintendent does it for the very, there's veterans IT, his department.
Zoning, conservation.
No, conservation does their own as well.
Okay.
And, and just in general, Tammy, you may want to, and Angie, we have upgraded, I mean, some of our departments used to get leftover sheriff's cars that some of them weren't fit to go outside of the county, and we have made sure that our employees have reliable transportation, and with that, the expectation is if you're going somewhere, that you take the county vehicle, and, you know, that's... Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table the resolution related to the use of vehicle administration policy.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to table this resolution, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. 7E, Resolution Approving the Cellphone Administrative Policy. I don't know, Dawn, if you want to?
This one, we updated, we really just kind of tossed out the old one and started new. I worked with our budget director and the auditor and her staff, and we went through this. Really, part of the reason we did this is we wanted to put some parameters about who is eligible for a cellphone, you know, that we put some considerations in there, so the elected official, our department had to use when determining if a county-issue phone should be given to an employee, or if a stipend would be a better fit in that situation. So we, a lot of it was the eligibility that had not been in a previous policy.
One of the items I did not see is the monthly stipend amount, either a recommendation or a range.
We have in there that the board of supervisors would determine that each year, and we would have that through the budget process.
Okay, and, and will be, will we be addressing that in this upcoming budget?
The budget process.
Because right now we have a mixed bag.
That's correct. Have two different tiers, I believe.
I mean, we certainly can address it in the budget. We got a lot of things going on in budget. I would, I would recommend looking at that stipend amount. Exactly at the same time you're looking at this resolution and this policy, they seem to be very tightly combined. And if there's, I don't know if we've gotten recommendations or otherwise. I mean, I, I don't think we wanna go through every individual person and their stipend amount. If, if you would be able to provide ranges and/or guidelines, that would be helpful for me.
Why didn't you include that in this resol, in this actual policy?
Put the actual dollar amount in?
Just, or a range. I mean, why did you leave it to be determined annually? Was there a reason why you left it that way?
Because if we put a range in there, we'd have to change, update the policy if that range ever moves. So we left it very generic. So we don't have to change the policy anytime that range would move.
But we'd have to do it during budget anyway, right?
If you wanna change it from year to year.
So you're gonna, you're gonna change it either way. You're gonna state it, because we have to have those dollar amounts in the budget. And, and my memory was that the whole, the whole dollar amount is about 5,000 a month from this spreadsheet.
From the report, yes.
Yeah, from the report and spreadsheet. So it's pretty significant. So the other question I would have is, is the board interested in, in looking at how to either make that more efficient? Or more standardized, or are we comfortable with that level? So I, you know, went over the high level. We've done numerous carriers, which could be a good thing, related to, you know, what our use is. But it's a significant enough dollar amount that you might wanna look at it over 60 grand a year.
I, I think it's, uh, worth looking at, uh, and whether we do that, uh, through the budget process or in a work session. But I, I don't disagree with Supervisor Wickham that once we establish it, if we work on it during this budget cycle. That maybe we work it into the, uh, uh, agreement. But I, 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 some of the, there's some questions I have. We have entire departments, some which I don't think we control, but, uh, uh, we have entire departments where everybody gets a stipend. And my guess is that within those departments, there's some that probably get called all the time, and some that get called very seldom. Are, are we paying a stipend because they may be called at some time?
Well, I know we've left it up to the department head. So it's not necessarily just being called off after hours. It could be during their actual workday as well. Um, because we have several locations. I'm thinking of, uh, facilities and IT particularly. They get called on their cell phones during their workday as well. So it's not just after hours because of the mobility that, that they need to have.
And I don't doubt that IT gets calls, but I don't think every one of them, uh, gets calls on a regular basis.
And I guess what I would say is this level of conversation about whether or not it's appropriate that a particular department or person gets a phone. Would be the reason why we wanna have this broad language, that the supervisors will set the, the amount in the budget session. Because I think that cell phone usage and who gets it shouldn't be in this policy. It would be in our annual budget as we look at each department. You know, in terms of, we wanna do that with each department to see, I don't disagree. I think $5,000 is a significant amount of money every month. And, but that will be addressed over time and through the budget, as we see each department come forward, if we care to look at it that way. But for this policy, I, I actually preferred your language, that it would be set by the supervisors. Otherwise, we have to do the policy and the supervisor's budget. They, we're gonna have this discussion about policy every year. Would be nice to get some policies set that just move forward with the other things, about the termination, after, you know, letting us know within five days. I mean, there's other things that should be in the policy that are good ideas, whether, however much the stipend is and however many departments are covered.
Okay, well, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think, uh, as far as setting the, um, you know, the amount, uh, uh. I, I think we need to do that and have a discussion on that. But I'm also, I guess what I'm asking is, do we have an audit process? To see if anyone is getting a stipend who doesn't deserve it?
I, I would say no, because we haven't, I mean, we put the eligibility requirements in this policy. That is new. So they never had, there was never any guidance to really make that determination.
So then maybe a work session with department heads to talk about this?
We can do that.
With, in or out of the budget process? Because I, I, when I sign those claims. I think there's probably within those departments, there's some that really need it, and some that are getting it that really aren't answering calls. And, and I, these are taxpayer dollars. Um, so if, if we're paying out extra money. I think we, we need to, uh, keep an eye on that. At least have some kind of a process to audit. That they're actually doing something to get the stipend.
Could we use that as one of our questions that we're going to ask every department when we see them at budget time? If we choose to say, to ask about their cell phone, who's using it? Are they familiar with the new guidelines, the new policies? Um, I'm sure now it will probably come up in almost every department. Who's using your cell phone? What is your policy? Did you do an audit? Do you know that it meets the new policy requirements?
Yeah, I, you know, to, I, I'm really think that, uh, um, if we should have our, our elected officials and department heads. Reviewing people's cell phone bills occasionally to make sure that they're answering calls and that they're need the stipend.
I think that's in there.
Both the stipend and the county-issue phones as well?
I'm, I'm more talking about where we, well, if, if somebody has a county cellphone and they're not using it, that's a problem as well. But, uh, that's, that's a management problem. Um, but, uh, I, I think, and I'm not saying this is a, uh, uh, a big problem. I just don't want it to be a problem. Uh, but I know that we have departments where everybody gets a stipend. And, and, and I hope that that is appropriate, but I don't know that it is. I also don't know that it's inappropriate. The department head or elected official, who's the department head, would know that. And they should at least have a handle on that. And that's, that's my point. And, and it may seem like, uh, treating, you know, in the overall scheme of things, treating nickels like, uh, manhole covers. But, uh, um, these are taxpayer dollars. And, uh, I wanna make sure that I think.
And maybe going to the language, there's, if you go to number three, I think it addresses, you know, the determination. And then if you go to number 22, you've got language in there related to the review. So is, is that strong enough language for you? So?
It is, but I, I, I also think in budget, I'll be asking them to come up with.
Okay.
Because I, I do think that it's broad enough where, um, uh. They're responsible for identifying employees, hold positions, and include the need for a cell phone. Okay. I don't think that's real strong. I, I, I.
The word strong is actually in there. Sorry.
Okay.
So I mean, if it's not strong enough, that's, then, you know, we're, we're reviewing this document, so I'm, I'm happy to make it stronger. Um, but number three, number 22, and then 22 specifically talks about review and approval from a department head or elected official.
On the submission, yeah.
Prior to submission for auditors. So you've got a couple documents, a couple statements in there about review and oversight, which I'm comfortable with right now. But if you're not, we can make them more detailed.
I think asking the questions at budget and letting this, first of all, letting this policy go out. And then it lets the department heads know what, where our expectation is clearly. And then asking the questions during budget will.
And, and it's probably, um, you know, this is my fourth year on the board and, uh, I haven't really made this an issue. But I think it's, from the history of signing claims, it seems like it's pretty consistent. So I, I, I just don't know if people are actually auditing records, so.
Yeah, agree. And we, this is a new policy. We've never had this policy before.
So I'm asking, yeah.
So yeah, so it is new.
I'm asking questions.
Yeah, and, and that's fair enough. And I think that's, I'm just pointing out, there is language in here addressing exactly your concerns.
Okay.
And I think that's a good thing, that we're, we're matching those. My other question would be related to open records. And I was trying to find it and I couldn't, I couldn't quickly find it here. How do you address, uh, Freedom of Information Act, open records related to phone calls? You know, this year we received our first one from the Telegraph Herald related to our general assistance program. And, uh, all of the emails were gathered up and forwarded to the Telegraph Herald at their request. Uh, I'm not familiar if they've ever done that with any of our cell phones.
I have not had a request for that.
Eighteen?
Number eighteen.
Records, I see, so our public records extend a law. And so co. County provided cell phones, so not, it doesn't, so this policy is saying that it excludes the stipend ones.
Right, because then you would be scooping up all their personal emails as well. I think there'd be. Would need to look at that from a legal perspective, whether it's an invasion of privacy. I think our policy would need to be significantly more extensive to go through. Their privacy concerns, First Amendment.
You're, you're hitting just on that, because there's three, three people here that I know use their personal cell phones for county business all the time. So that's my question. And so how should we address it?
We're not included in this. And we're not getting, as far as I know, I'm not being reimbursed anything.
Correct, nor am I. And so you've got a couple issues. And so I don't think reimbursement is a, is a requirement for public open access records.
They've only ever answered.
It's just my, it's just my question. So what, how are you gonna handle it if you get a request, Freedom of Information Act, for, give me all the phone calls from. A, one group to another group that's public?
I would probably prefer a county attorney to. Um, I just know that with the law, any government-related documents or, or reports. Are subject to open records, even if they're on your own personal device. Um, I've seen it in the past where I actually had to go get, uh, uh, subpoena to obtain that. From a personal device. But I would prefer that the county attorney address that, because I think that is a, a legal issue. But the, the phone call itself or a text, if it's related to government-related business, it's my understanding it is subject to open records. Regardless of the device. How you obtain it is more of a legal question, I think.
So my question to the board is, are you comfortable with the, the language in eighteen? Or would you like more detail related to open records and stipend or non-stipend devices?
I would prefer that it remain this way. It's, it's, it does say to the extent required by law, so it's giving that as a broad brush. Generally, I think policy should be, should set forth expectations, but not necessarily go into those kinds of details. Um, otherwise, we're gonna have outdated documents. And someone will need to keep an eye on the legal changes that impact this potentially. Both with, in our case, I think at several levels, you know, not just the state law, but it could be, um, arbitration, something come down through contract negotiations. There's just a lot, I'm not saying we're not trying to be aware of that, but it seems the policy's purpose is to set forth general direction to the directors. And I don't wanna include a legal brief in this. I guess that's my perspective. If we want, I think anymore, we're gonna have to have the county attorney devise the language.
Has the county attorney reviewed these policies?
He did in December.
Okay.
Because this one has not.
Okay. What's your, what are your thoughts here?
I'm prepared, I would make a motion to approve.
Um, I'll second it. Open for discussion.
Yeah, I was just not through with the discussion yet related to, you know, and so my, my question was, back to the board, and I heard Supervisor McDonough's response. I did not hear yours, but maybe by seconding it, you're implicitly okay with the language in eighteen. That was my question. I was questioning the language and questioning the open records component of this. And if you two are both fine with it, then we should proceed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three zero.
After a good discussion. All right, next up, seven F, resolution approving the general assistance policy. And. We have, uh, uh, Josh Jasper here from Resources United. Do you want Josh to?
Maybe Don can comment on the, the county attorney's, uh, input. I think he had two items that were changed.
Yes.
So they're pretty minor, so I'm glad he had the review and.
So the one that's up here, um, this is not new language. Um, it's just the placement of it. This, um, sentence previously, um, appeared after what is now the last sentence. So it, it seemed to flow better that we would notify them in writing before their actual appeal. So it's no new language, it's just placement of the sentence. And then. He asked to clarify, um, that the family member is residing in the household. And that term had been used in a couple other places as well. So we just added, um, those four words.
Yeah, I was comfortable with both those changes, if that's what he, he had recommended.
Yes.
And other than that, then this has been reviewed by the county attorney?
Yes, he gave me these changes Friday, and I sent those out too.
Josh, have you had a chance to look at this other than? Okay. And this, okay. All right. What's your pleasure?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented with the two modifications from the county attorney.
Motion's made. Is there a second? I will second it. Uh, motion made and seconded. Open for discussion.
I continue to have, um, concern about the appeal procedure. And that is that this, um, procedure, excuse me, this policy document allows for Resources United to create. An independent initial appeal committee, um, that we don't have oversight over, unlike our other boards and commissions. We don't know who serves on this. We, um, we are not in, in any way exercising any of our own supervision. Or even having the right to know who those folks are on that initial appeal committee. I have hesitation about that. Um, and I don't think that our stakeholders, um, in the community at large are necessarily comfortable with this in, initial appeal committee. That is a significant and a dramatic change to general assistance from the way it has always gone on before. And while I understand the county attorney has reviewed this and has not raised that as an objection. And I also acknowledge that we have, and I appreciate, Josh, that you submitted your confidentiality agreement. I have read through that as well. I am uncomfortable with this as part of our policy, and that is my primary reason that I'm going to be voting no.
Okay. And I will comment on this as well. Part, that the reason I will be voting yes for this is that in the past. Almost all of our applicants were, uh, deemed ineligible and, uh, forced to go through the appeal process. Uh, and, uh, because of the artificially low, uh, poverty standards that we had adopted. Uh, we've, we've, at the recommendation of, uh, Mr. Jasper and, and Resources, Resources Unite. We've modernized, uh, those. Uh, I think everybody agrees that somebody, uh, the, the, the threshold being $6,000 a year. Uh, was a bit low. Um, and, uh, so we've modernized it, and it's up to 12,000 now, uh, for someone to be eligible. Um, that's, that's in the policy. But there will be folks that can be helped. With, uh, uh, without coming to the board and without creating an automatic appeal process. And it was part of the proposal, uh, initially, uh, this board. And I'm, I'm comfortable that, uh, with the submission of the confidentiality, confidentiality policy. Um, that, uh, that will be adhered. that, that will be adhered to, so I will be voting for it. Any other comments or discussions?
Yeah, I would echo that this is, in your Supervisor McDonough's words, significant and dramatic changes. And so I'm, I'm pleased with that, because I, I felt that's what we needed to do. You look at the separation between Veterans Affairs responsibilities and duties to dedicate it to Veterans Affairs. I've already seen them implement new programs and take on new initiatives to serve our veterans, and I think that's wonderful. And that was one of the primary goals of, of separating those, these responsibilities. The second piece is just Supervisor Baker mentioned, the eligibility requirements, changing those, and then actually changing that appeal process, I think will give us a much, much, much improved outcome compared to my, my last four years of, of being on the board and going through those appeal processes. So I also will be voting in favor of this.
Okay.
Something else I'd like to point out, and I think it's important for the community to know, that today we'll be having a status report filed by Resources United that will be discussed here in a, in a work session, I believe. Is that correct, Don? Yeah. And some of the numbers of applications to general assistance, that what the total number is, and then further what the applications have been to even the appeal committee. And there's only been two appeals from denial of services, as I understand this. And that only one further appeal came to the Board of Supervisors, and that, that is, that person appealed and came here because that individual and family contacted me personally, and I was able to, with enough time, they explained where they were in the process with Resources United, and that they had been denied verbally at least. We were able to get it onto our agenda to have them have a written appeal and then come up to see us. That's been the only appeal to the Board of Supervisors since September first. And there's only been two other appeals to the appeal committee. And so, and that is without enhancing the financial eligibility, without making more individuals eligible for just an outright yes, a positive determination of their request. So the numbers of denials and the numbers of appeals do not reflect what we would expect. Again, I would say significant and dramatic. I'll use those words again. So I think that, I know I am in the minority on this, and that is fine. And I also know we are far enough into the detail that the community wants us to move past this. They would like to actually begin to see how the process is working, and so we're going to turn a new page. But I do think that that, again, that you can increase your financial eligibility. You can allow folks to have greater income and still be able to apply for general assistance. That is one issue. The second is that appeal process, and it is the appeal process that, that I will be, just want you to know that that's, it's not the increase in the money. I'm in the minority on that, but that's the final sticking issue for me.
Okay, and, and then I'll also comment that, again, part of the reason that I voted to go with having Resources United handle this program is the ability to refer them to other services. I think it's referred to as wraparound services, and the familiarity of Mr. Jasper and his organization with many of the individuals that come seeking assistance. And I have also had discussions with Mr. Jasper about individual cases. And I think I find that he's been very responsive on those. All right, all, I guess, all in favor, the motion was made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Carried two to one. Okay. Next up on the agenda is item number eight, communications, proof of publication for zoning cases. Okay, we have eight B, assessed valuation litigation settlement, 2019.
It's just a notification from the legal process related to their appeal.
Okay.
This is the Martin Luther Home Property Assessment Appeal Board. And I'm not familiar with any of the background about this, so I know that, I know what our proper action is supposed to be. But it would be interesting to know maybe some more details about it, but I can pursue that individually. This time I'd make a motion to receive and file.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion to receive and file? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three zero. Number nine, approval of appointments, nine A, one, Dubuque Township application. We have the application of Timothy. Oops.
Timothy Noel, is that right?
Timothy Noel. And.
Make a motion to approve the trustee application of Timothy Noel.
And I will second that.
Okay. Any, the motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. And then we have EMS Advisory Committee. So we're into nine B, open vacancies on boards and commissions. We have a EMS Advisory Committee application of Rob Whedenbacher. And I know Rob is real active in.
He's been the recipient of one of the highest awards.
Yes, at the Hall of Flame.
He actually, I think in his application, he was rather modest.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the application of Bob Whedenbacher.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. And then we have the, for informational purposes, showing that we have openings, I believe, that we'll have an applicant for the Sunnycrest Manor Operations Board forthcoming. And I have started recruiting as well. We have three or four openings on that board. And need to have some folks on there, and we're looking for healthcare-related folks for that, if we can get them, so. All right, anything else under approval of appointments? Now we'll go to item number ten, personnel requisitions. Got ten A, Assistant Health Director.
Know we have our health director and our board chair here as well. Not sure if they want to comment on this. The question I had is if the pay range was the, the same, if that was consistent. I don't know if you knew that.
No, that was for the naturalist. For this one, no, this is the, the current salary.
This is bargaining unit, right? This is?
No, this is not. This is a non-bargaining position.
Okay.
And then we looked at this last year, or we asked you to look at it, and I think we, I don't recall that we came to a clear understanding of whether or not this was the pay's range that we wished to be in. Have you had discussion with Patrice, our Director of Public Health? Is this an agreed-upon range?
I, I've had discussion with Tom. Tom and I went through, had several meetings on it, and we, no, we decided not to make any changes to it.
Okay. So this is, we're approving so that they can go forward and with the hiring process.
That is correct.
Okay, and I, I can tell you that we need to, we need to do this ASAP, so.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. All right, next up is ten B, naturalist. We have the salary range. This was tabled previously. Do we have any updates?
Right. That is correct. So Brian and I went, kind of very similar to our budget process last year, and looked at the Iowa counties number six through ten. Dubuque County is currently number eight. We also obtained the salary information from some of our local or in close proximity counties, because they are ones that we recruit against or vie for, for these positions. And so what you have there is the average of all of those entry, minimum and maximum salary ranges. So we thought it was fitting to put that, since we're number eight, in that range, that we thought we would, we would propose a wage scale that was near the average of all of those. So that is what you have in front of you.
Can you clarify that? What do we have in front of us?
So this is a new proposed wage scale that is very close to the average of the salaries for the number six through ten counties. And then we also had three other counties that Brian provided the information for, that we would normally compete with for these types of positions, some of the local counties.
And how does this relate to what the current pay is?
So at the, at the maximum, it's about four thousand dollars more a year.
So this is different than when we first saw this request?
That is correct, yep. The request for, for us was to review the salaries, and so we did, looked in, again, kind of the same process that we used last year through the budget process, is really look at those counties that are more our size, and that's where we determine the number six through ten counties.
Is it likely that this modification to salary range will impact our budget in terms of other, other improvements for sal, for people in the conservation?
You do have a, a naturalist, so he has two budgeted for, and so this would be a pay increase for the current one. And then he would have to either make an amendment for the rest of this year, but yes, it would change. He has two full-time naturalist positions.
So that's a little bit of my concern, is that by doing it this way, we're actually impacting the budget beyond just a person. They were going to try to find a higher, a qualified candidate. We're actually going to be increasing the pay to current employees. Should we be having this, that conversation first before we do this?
I, my request was to follow the similar process we did with, help me, I, IT facilities, maybe roads.
Roads Department.
And so we, we didn't quite get there, so there's additional data and information that I was presented with at the Conservation Board that I don't believe has been shared with you two yet. So, you know, I'm comfortable with the outcome, but we didn't exactly follow the same process, which I'm not objecting to, I'm just stating.
We were moving quickly.
And, and is this because he has a position that he needs to fill?
Yes.
Otherwise, it could have waited until budget?
If there was a vacancy and the request was made of us, and so that's what we did, we started that.
The IT came during, pretty much during the budget process.
Roads and IT did come through the budget process last year.
Not this way, through an opening and a, and a recruitment posting. That's my concern, is that what we're doing is posting a requisition, but we're going to, by doing this, actually already have committed to something we don't have any more materials before us today about. We're not going into, we haven't posted on our agenda, budget discussion about impact on current employees. That's different.
Here's my feelings on it. I, I don't have enough information to approve this. So as, as Supervisor Wickham said, but nor do I want to vote against it. I don't, I don't want to defeat this. So my recommendation would be that we table this and that we, Supervisor McDonough and I receive all the information, and that we have Brian in the room to talk about, you know, recruiting, where he gets, where the folks come from that he seeks out, and we have more information. I'm not, like I said, like I said last time, last year, if we just start throwing out upgrades, everybody, there's going to be a line out the door and down the steps out to Central Avenue. And, you know, we, we just can't operate that way, so. I'm, I'm not likely to support this today with the lack of information that I have.
I'm going to make a motion to table.
I will second that.
The motion made and seconded to table?
Discussion.
Is there any further discussion?
I would like to know when we are going to have the Conservation Department before us as part of our budget sessions, because I don't, I do not wish to have this come back before us until we've addressed it inside the budget itself. So we have had our good thorough discussion about what the other requests are, what are the needs that are going to be coming from conservation. And because I, I don't think this is the only personnel request that there's going to be, I'd like to see it, I would like to see it all. Now, I'm hoping that that does not delay this position for six weeks.
It will. We're not able to hire them.
So the tentative schedule that the Budget Director has proposed would be that the Conservation Department comes in front of you on January thirty-first. So it would be after this would come back to you on our twenty, the meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Right, so I guess that's, that's what I would say in discussion. I want to hear from the Conservation Department, their complete budget, including any capital improvement requests. I'd like to see the whole thing before we go forward with wage increases.
There is an option. We, Brian could contact one of us about scheduling a work session before the twenty-seventh on this particular issue and give us the information.
But my hesitancy will be the same, which is, without seeing the overall department budget, it, it impacts more than just a person. So I, I want to see it all, whether it comes in two weeks, it still predates when they'll be before us as a department.
Okay, and then maybe as part of that, he can lobby with Stella for getting moved up. And, and, you know, I, I know this is an important position, but the position's open now, and I'm pretty sure business is being conducted and taken care of. There's probably a few, you know, less outreach type things and.
Definitely less programs.
You know, yeah, and that, that's, and that, but we, we, we have that because of the sudden departure of an employee, so.
Yeah, I think it just echoed in general, what the Supervisor said. I would like to have the Conservation Director here. I think generally speaking, I was very pleased to see Tom and Patrice here from Health. They had a requisition on here, and so if they can know that there's items that the board's considering that are changes, it's probably important that those directors be here and be consistent.
Okay. All right, there was a motion made and seconded to table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. All right. Believe. Okay, tabled impending items. I don't see any. Okay. Public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person, which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address, make your comments. However, no formal action on your comments may be taken at this time because of notice requirements. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to recess till eleven o'clock.
So moved.
And I will second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried. We are in recess.